Okay, I'll go ahead and call this work session of the Squim City Council to order. The topic of this work session is taxing increment financing. I'd like to introduce Bob Stowe.
I can do a quick intro. So when I first moved up here, everybody said, you really need to go to the W or A W C 101 training for all city managers because it's a different state and you'll be amazed. So I did went to Yakma, took a day and a half of city manager 101. And Bob Stowe's name kept coming up and up as a guru for a lot of things, any kind of economic development, also some unique work with different cities. And I'm always pay attention to names. And so when so that's where I first became familiar with him. And I was thinking, I wonder what he would say we could do in Squim. So we talked about, do you remember those days? We actually talked a bit, never formalized anything. I think we both just got busy in our own little ways, but he came up here once or twice, and we had several remote calls about economic development and how putting together a plan or something in Squim. Anyway, a year or two goes by and then I hear that as we're starting to decide how to possibly get some infrastructure to other parts of the city that we need and that we, you know, is kind of a challenge financially to get there. Again, Bob Stowe's name, I remember that guy. So this is a long introduction. I've asked him to go through and talk to you about his actual C V. But we've had a chance to, we've just closed a contract to use him as a consultant to evaluate the viability or not of a TIF program for Squim. And we're just starting that. But I didn't want to get very far ahead of council. Don't know where this will go. In a month from now, we could say, yeah, it just didn't pencil, it didn't make sense for a variety of reasons. Or wow, the modeling, the financial modeling seems to be a possible path forward. So don't know where that will go. But I did want to get Bob in front of you and I'll just turn it over to him to do the rest of the personal and professional introductions. Thanks for driving up.
Great. Thank you, Matthew. And thank you for the introduction. Again, my name is Bob Stowe, Stowe Development Strategies. It's really great to be here with you this evening to talk about a relatively new tool of tax increment financing. It's a powerful tool. However, as the name implies, it's not a new tax. That's a common name that's applied throughout the country, the tax increment financing. It's really more of a mechanism that directs existing taxes that are collected from development back to the jurisdiction that put the infrastructure and that caused the development in the first place. So I wish I could change the name, but I can't. This is what people refer to tax increment financing as, or TIF. Just a little bit about me, and I think Matt will send a bio out to you later, too. But I've been serving local governments for the past 39 years as a community development and economic development professional. The last nine years as a consultant with my own firm, Stowe Development Strategies, where to develop master plans, develop development visions, the regulatory rules for that development, infrastructure plans, master plans, public-private partnerships, and then tax increment financing has been a piece of that work as well. Most of my clients are cities, but a few of them also include counties and tribal governments and some higher education. And my work has primarily been in Washington, although I do have some clients occasionally in other states. And then for about a year and a half, I also worked a little bit in Europe with a higher education client and developing some of their student housing and redeveloping some of their campuses as well. For the past, I also have a related career prior to my consulting career of 38 years as a city manager for different cities, four different cities, all in Washington State. Three of those having really large-scale redevelopment efforts that I was a part of and led along with my city staff and then specialty consultants. The last two being, over the 22 years, being Mill Creek and Bothell. Mill Creek helped them develop the vision and then execute on that vision to develop a lifestyle center, what they called their town center development. And then the last 12 as city manager with the city of Bothell and revitalizing its downtown. That included the use of, I think, every economic development tool that we had at our disposal in order to implement and construct $100 million of public improvements that then also stimulated private development investment of $350 million in just a short few years after groundbreaking. So I mean, I tell you those as a background because I know what a busy, entirely this job that you all have when you govern and provide leadership to the city. And so I really appreciate the time that you're providing me here this evening to talk a little bit about tax increment financing. And so I just wanted to start off to give you a little bit of background and some of the tax increment financing projects that my firm has worked on. And this represents about 12 projects across the state. It's the body of work is probably twice that that's existed in the States to date. It's legislation, again, it's only been created since 2021. So there's about two dozen projects across the state that are ongoing, but includes projects, at least the ones that have completed what's called a project analysis. This is a formal report that you have to submit to the state when you're going to form a tax increment area, and you'll learn more about that. Those cities include the city of Pasco, Kirkland, Shalane, College Place, Blaine, Lakewood, and Moses Lake. And you can only form a tax increment area on June 1st of any one year. And so these are all the tax increment cities that were formed by June 1 of 2023. And so the ones that are coming up, of course, are new batch, but these are the ones that we worked on. They range from generating, the ability to generate revenues from 3.5 million, the city of Blaine, which is was primarily a single-family development, which with a little bit of commercial, all the way to the city of Kirkland, which was $58 million of revenue in order to support infrastructure funding for that community. A couple of these cities have also already implemented and issued debt, city of Pasco being the first sort of tax increment area that was formed in the state, actually number two, following the port of Pasco, but they recently issued $39 million of debt on a project that they would not have been able to issue had it not been for tax increment These are some other agencies that we're currently working with, Friend, Douglas County, Linwood, Burien, and then a few others that have sort of paused, waiting for it to develop to sort of catch up because there's a strategic timing element when you implement a tax increment area because you only have so many years in which you can collect revenue. You want to make sure that development is close behind so you can take advantage of that, of those additional taxes. And we'll talk more about that. So again, what is TIF? I gave you kind of a brief explanation, but again, it's an economic and financing tool that supports desired development by redirecting some of the property tax revenues generated by the private development to fund the public improvements needed for the private development to exist. And so it's really sort of the but for the public investments, this private development would not have occurred. And so that's always been the dilemma in Washington State. Well, you have significant infrastructure needs and you want a development, but you don't have the monies to pay for those infrastructure needs. So this is a mechanism in which you're utilizing the taxes that are generated from the development to help pay for the infrastructure that caused it in the first place. This is a basic model that exists of tax increment financing across the country. It's similar also in Washington. The difference in Washington State is that the tax levies that get applied to a tax increment area exclude the state schools and then some of the exempt levies. And so a big portion of the property tax that people pay are exempt from tax increment financing. And so what happens is that the jurisdiction would create what's called a tax increment area. You've heard me refer to that a number of times now. It's basically a boundary around an area that can't be more than $200 million of assessed value at the time that you form it. But that effectively freezes that assessed value that exists in that area so that any development that comes after that, the levies that apply to that tax increment area just get taxed on that incremental growth or that incremental assessed value that gets created. So the base value stays the same, that continues to collect revenue for all the different jurisdictions and that revenue is distributed to those jurisdictions. It's when new growth happens, that then goes to the TIF sponsor, whoever funded or formed the tax increment area to pay for the infrastructure cost. It was legislation that was, let me back up, was legislation that was created in 2021 and then modified in 2022 and 2023. So it hasn't been, doesn't have a long history in Washington, but certainly a long and sometimes colorful history across the country. And so basic overview for tax increment financing is that it's only available to cities, counties, and ports. Those are the only three entities that can form a tax increment area by law. Powerful economic development tools, I'd mentioned. It's designed really for a project-specific or site-specific situation, not that you'd want to form one and then you hope development will happen because generally people, when they're forming a tax increment area, they're also issuing debt in order to finance public improvements that are necessary for the development. Well, to do so without a development close behind means that you're just paying for that debt from your own general resources. And so it's really important to sort of make sure that you have a project, you have more of a development project looking for financing rather than TIF looking for a project. All the projects of TIF, whether it's in Washington State or somewhere else, have this but-for requirement or but-for argument, meaning that but for the infrastructure, the development would not occur. Because regardless of where the tax dollars are collected or how they're collected, they're still public tax dollars. And you want to make sure you're using wide use of them and you're providing stewardship for those dollars. You're not simply gifting them or giving them away for development that should have happened on its own without any public subsidy. Of course, once you create a tax increment area and development starts to happen after the infrastructure is put in, that of course creates new assessed value, generates the public benefits likely that you're looking for when you were asking for that type of development, and also creates some both long-term jobs as well as short-term jobs. And then taxes from the development fund the infrastructure needed by the private development. So some of, sort of the logistics associated with forming a tax increment area include that a city, county, or port would adopt an ordinance that forms the increment area, that boundary around no more than $200 million of assessed value, that you'd identify the types of public improvements that you believe are necessary in order to incentivize the kind of development that you want. And then whether or not bonds or debt is going to be issued. You could also use a pay-as-you-go strategy, meaning that you simply collect the taxes on an annual basis that you receive from the assessor, from that tax increment area, and then fund the infrastructure investments that you can afford based on that revenue in any one year. Typically, that's usually not enough in order to sort of stimulate development. And so that's why a lot of jurisdictions would issue debt in advance based on the full 25 years of revenues so that you can pledge that against the debt service when it becomes due. As I mentioned, the increment area can be no longer, no larger than the $200 million of assessed value at the time that that increment area is formed. And also you're limited to no more than two increment areas at any one time, and they cannot overlap and cannot overlap. And of course, you're limited to two. The other governing factor is 20% of the total assessed valuation of the sponsored jurisdiction, but we haven't seen that apply yet because most AVs of the area are much larger. And so the 200 million is typically the one that's going to govern. After you form a tax increment area, you cannot change the boundary of that area after its form, or you cannot add any additional improvements after you adopt the ordinance forming the tax increment area. You also must include a deadline as to when you would initiate your public improvements, and the statute requires that to occur within five years after you adopt your tax increment area, although there's no penalty prescribed in the statute as to what happens if you don't construct your improvements within that five-year period. The local government can only receive those revenues for the period of time that's necessary to pay for the cost of the public improvements. So if you pay off your public improvements early before the expiration of the TIA, that TIA would automatically expire at the same time that those public improvements are paid off. And in no case can a tax increment area be in existence longer than 25 years.
What's TIA?
Tax increment area. Yeah, tax increment financing is simply the kind of the common name, but really what you're adopting, if you get to that point, is that you're forming a tax increment area in which to collect, it's basically an encadment area in which to collect the taxes that then get distributed to you so you can pay for the infrastructure.
The other acronym that is used frequently in this space is AV, which is assessed value. And so you've probably heard that already, too, but that's another.
Yes. So some of the, some of the things that you could use tax increment financing for are public improvements that are owned by you, the city, the county, the port, or the state. And they include sort of a laundry list. The statute provides a laundry list of different public improvements that you could use those revenues for. And what I've shown on the screen here is a sampling of those types of public improvements. And then generally, what you would normally expect for horizontal public improvements, the streets, the roads, the sidewalks, the sewer water, stormwater, but also includes some unique public improvements in that you could fund parking garages, dock facilities, terminal facilities, which is really more important for ports, but also includes park-and-ride facilities as well as community facilities. So you have a pretty good laundry list of types of infrastructure that could incentivize private development. If the private development was, was going to take that cost on and determine it was not viable, tax financing can step in to help provide and fill that gap. Yes.
When it says recreation areas, does that mean playgrounds?
It can.
Okay. And then what are brownfields?
Brownfields are properties that have been some environmental contamination, could be hydrocarbons from gas stations, or it could be something more serious such as dry cleaners, old dry cleaners that have chemicals that have leached into the ground.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, a project analysis is required in order to form a tax increment area. That project analysis needs to be submitted to the Office of State Treasurer. They don't have any rulemaking authority. In other words, they can't, they can't veto that or disapprove that. They simply provide comments after they review the project analysis to the council, to the port, or to the county before you adopt any ordinance. And so that project analysis would include a description of the type of development that would occur with the public improvements, and then description of the type of development as well as its assessed valuation without the public improvements. And so they can clearly see then sort of what happens if you were to put in public improvements. It's really getting at that but-for requirement. We'd also look at, and the project analysis requires that we look at any impacts to affordable housing in the area, a local business community, local school districts. Although school districts aren't a part of the tax increment area, they continue to collect all the taxes as they normally would, local fire service. And then the underlying parts are new legislation in 2024, also looking at any impacts to public hospital districts or emergency medical services. And then really all junior taxing districts that might exist inside your tax increment area will examine, and the law requires that we examine as part of the project analysis, any impacts. As I mentioned, we must include a description of the public improvements. That description can be a very general description, such as streets, roads, sewer water, or it could be very specific, road-specific, utility-specific. The public improvements don't need to be inside the tax increment area. You can certainly fund public improvements outside that. There just has to be a nexus, a reason for the development to exist if it were public improvements that were being developed outside of that tax increment area. We must also include, and we would include, a jobs analysis, both short-term jobs and ongoing jobs, and then a risk assessment and mitigation plan. How will you pay for any debt if you were to issue debt if development doesn't materialize as modeled in the project analysis? Or if it moves slower than anticipated, what's plan B for paying any debt that you might issue? And a particular note is that passage of a tax incrementary ordinance doesn't commit the TIF sponsor, being the city, county, or port, to actually issuing any debt or funding the public improvements. It simply creates an area in which you collect the taxes if development does happen and any growth does happen. So even if no development happened, there would likely still be some modest growth in the tax increment area year over year, just from inflation, that would continue to collect and then be distributed to you. These are some of the notice provisions that, again, to underline proportion are new to the state in 2024 with some amendments. You need to provide notice to all of the local governments inside a tax increment area 90 days before submitting the project analysis to the state. Then you then submit that project analysis to the state Office of State Treasurer. They have 90 days to review it. So right off the bat, you have a six-month period of time in which to sort of evaluate tax increment area analysis or tax increment financing at a minimum. Remember that June 1 is also the date in which you can form a tax increment area. So working backwards means that you would need to provide a notice to the various taxing districts sometime by the end of October, early November at the latest, so that you can meet those timeframes and still form a tax increment area by June 1 of the following year, which in this case would be June 1 of 2025. Once you complete the project analysis, you would submit that also to all the local governments. You'd hold a couple of public briefings on the tax increment area. You'd publish a notice, send the notices out to the various selected bodies, and then the increment area, after you've completed that process, the increment area, assuming you pass an ordinance in May, that increment area would take effect June 1 of any one So as Matt, as the city manager had mentioned, we're currently working with, with, with he and the staff on studying some areas of how TIF might be useful and support some public improvements that would then create a viable and desired private development opportunities in the city. And then we, through that work, we hope to be able to share more information with council in October and November of this year. So just some quick observations through our work with tax increment area cities over the last couple of years. TIF, again, really works best when private development projects are ready to go, if not for the public improvement needs. Early outreach to the various taxing districts is important because this is a new law, and making sure that they understand how the law works is important, and it makes the process much more smoother. On average, we have seen for every $100 million of assessed valuation increase, this is based on the infrastructure and development that would occur, TIF would support about $5 million of public improvements. And we've seen it, this all depends on the scope of development, the size and magnitude, how quickly the development happens, is it happening in the front end of the 25 years of the, of the tax increment area period? And this, how quickly that occurs, as well as the levy rate that exists within the tax increment area. We've seen levy rates from $2.50 to $5 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. It just depends on the taxing districts inside of the area that you select. And then subject to the scope and timing of the private development, TIF revenues could be sufficient to pay for all of your public improvements, or maybe simply are paying for a portion of that stacked with some other grants or other resources that you may also be contributing. Remember, I mentioned the city's going to be responsible for any debt. Typically, if you issue limited-term general obligation bonds, which is debt that the city would issue, then you're pledging your full faith and credit of your general resources. So if you default on those, your general resources are what's paying the bondholders for any of that debt. And if you issue that in accordance with your TIF projects, you want to make sure that you have a revenue stream in which to rely upon to pay for that debt service. And so a couple of things that we have seen other communities and have helped other communities create are some mitigation agreements. And one way to mitigate that is, of course, is through development agreements. Development agreements would provide basically a schedule and timeframe as well as responsibilities for each party, both the city and the developer, so that there's no surprises related to any shortages of, of revenue that might get created from development. But the best way that we have found in order to sort of really mitigate the city's risk is a financial agreement and that you would have between you and the developer, in which the developer would be responsible and basically financially backstop either a portion or all of the annual debt that's not covered by TIF revenues. And typically, there will always be a few years, especially in the start of a development, when development's just starting to get stabilized, that it's not generating the full amount of revenue yet. And so if you have debt that you've issued, and typically your debt is sort of a level debt, where maybe issuing your payments, maybe a million dollars per year, and your development's only bringing in the first couple of years, $500,000, this would, this would assure that the private developer would step up, provide that other $500,000, and then be repaid back by the city after the TIF revenue starts generating more than the debt service. So really, it's a financial backstop from the developer that they're responsible for all the costs of that debt if it doesn't materialize through, for, through TIF property taxes. And that completes the presentation. I know I've given you a lot of information, a lot of detail, but be glad to address any questions that you would have and drill down to any areas that you're interested in.
The city I came from in Ohio did this.
Yes.
And a lot of, with the older TIFs. A lot of states stopped doing it because it was fraud between the elected officials and the developers. But apparently this, Washington has rewritten it, correct?
Yes, they spent Washington's for decades, since my public sector career had been discussed and debated whether or not TIF was going to be legislation that was created in this state. And so they took a long time crafting legislation, and it doesn't have some of those other pitfalls at other jurisdictions. Typically, TIF gets a bad name from a gifting of public funds or funds directly to the developer that the development, development didn't need it necessarily. And so it was really development, if they, it was, if it was taking place, it was really taking a win as a result from TIF, but it didn't really, the infrastructure didn't have much to do with them funding, you know, the project moving forward. The developer probably would have been able to accomplish the improvements themselves, or the development probably would have been able to go forward without the public improvements.
Well, this does sound a little different than what happened in southeast Ohio because the developer paid a large amount of money to the city and was held in an account, and he had to build the roads, the sidewalks, and the drainage. And then, and then the city had to sign off on it before he got his money back. And, which I thought was odd, I don't know why they got into that arrangement to begin with, but the city engineer wouldn't sign off on it. So there's some drama.
Yeah, I mean, you could have a developer use a reimbursement type on agreement. We've seen that there's an older version of tax increment financing in Washington State that's a little more limited than, than the one that we're discussing. But it requires that the developer, typically the developer would put the improvements in. Those improvements have to be designed and signed off by the city or the county or whosoever responsibility that is. And then once they turn those over and convey those to the city after they approve them, they can request whatever amount of money up to the amount of the cost of the public improvements that, that TIF has generated in any one year. So the, in that case, the developer is really at risk to financing all the public improvements and building the public improvements and only gets paid from the amount of money that actually gets collected. So that could still be done in Washington State, but you certainly have to have some safeguards upfront that require the development's infrastructure, if they're going to be building it, has to be signed off, design has to be signed off, as well as the construction has to be signed off by the municipality before you accept it.
Sorry. On June 1 of each year is the only time this can be done or submitted, or does it go to state review?
It goes to the Office of State Treasurer, and they're, they don't have, they don't have disapproval. They just provide and offer comments. And the Office of State Treasurer is primarily, I mean, they're, they manage the state's debt. And so generally, what the comments that we have seen from the state so far have been comments about making sure the city understands that if they issue debt, that they're responsible for that debt typically, unless you have some sort of backfill agreement or guarantee from the developer that they're going to step up and also pay that debt. But ultimately, it's going to be the city's responsibility for, for any debt that you issue, regardless of development materializes or not. You're welcome. Yes. Yes.
When the improvements are made, are is there anything preventing us from requesting that active transportation facilities be included in the improvements? Or is that standard procedure that they're built to include multi modes of transportation?
So the public improvements that you you indicate in your ordinance. Those are going to be the public improvements at one that you approve of being built and and utilizing TIP resources for. As well as whatever design guidance or restrictions or regulations that you would have. So yes, in short answer, whatever improvements that you want to build and you believe are necessary. And that are going to be financed with tax increment financing, you are you're able then to dictate. How those improvements are are built and how they're how they're designed.
So Heather, I might have you go back to the schematic, that's the one that's the slide with the schematic. Oh, Bob's got it. Okay, that that's a nice visual for me to try to, you know, understand the model. Because there is that flat period where the existing base doesn't change. And you haven't start started benefiting from the the, you know, the project yet, but it does start, it does come on. It depends how how fast, right? What is the project? How much debt did you take out and can you pay that debt? So but that's the that's a that's a nice visual that you may want to refer to as you it's been helpful for me. I will say that one of the reasons we've asked Bob to help us figure out if this makes sense or not. Is mostly for the east side of the city where it's most of the developments are still on septic and. And septic and well, yeah, so they need they need sewer and water. And it's just very expensive to get it down down to that end of town. Although we're trying to, as Bob has asked us, he's putting lists together. Start thinking through where do you want to draw your lines for, you know, the TIA, the tax increment area. And so we're just barely doing that, trying to pick where we know developments are coming soon. That we would benefit from the increased assessed value because they're being built. And so that's that's kind of where we're at. If you're wondering like, where's the application of this? It's mostly for kind of that end of town is what we're that's what we're spending time on now, trying to evaluate some borders. I've got a call later this week with the port of Port Angeles, doesn't make sense. I really don't know or not if John Wayne Moreno wants to be in on this or not. Don't don't know if that adds value to them or to us, so this is how early it is, so. Yeah.
Another question. So if in my understanding, this would be the funds have to go towards, ooh, that got really on really fast. The funds have to go towards the projects that are attached to the development is or or can. The the revenue be happening due to development on one side of the city. But then the funds get used to improve the core of the city where there isn't infrastructure. So how does that work?
Sure, good question. So the funds for the public improvements, there has to be some nexus to the private development that's inside the tax increment area. So in order for that development or and it could be maybe it's a sewer plant as an example, that's might be outside of your tax increment area. But it's necessary in order for the development or the development to occur inside the tax increment area. So it doesn't necessarily have to be public improvements that fit nicely when the tax increment area, but there has to be a nexus to that development. There has to be a reason for putting those public improvements in with tax increment area financing. And how it's helping incentivizing development inside a certain area. So you it can't be unrelated public improvements in one part of the city. And just taking advantage of a development in another part of the city. In order to collect the revenue to help pay for those public improvements, there's got to be a nexus. And not to overcomplicate the the chart, which is a very simplistic chart. The incremental taxes are shown in that green area. Those would all go to the TIP sponsor, assuming that you needed all of that revenue in order to support the public improvements. And many times the tax increment area is generating, we'll say, for example, $500 million over a, you know, life. Actually, it'd be less than that, we'll say we'll say $50 million that's generating over a 25 year life. But you're only needing 25 million of that. And so that means you're just going to collect 25 million of that to pay for the public improvements. The other 25 million are going to get redistributed amongst all the taxing districts like they do within the existing tax base. Yes.
I just want to clarify, on this graph, you have the existing tax base. Revenue continued to flow to normal taxing bodies. This increment taxes in the TIP is in addition, like we're not going to take money from the school system.
That's correct. In fact, the schools are specifically exempt from even the incremental portion of the taxes. And so the other taxing districts, you know, the county, the ports, library districts, junior taxing districts. They'll have levies that will that will apply to the tax increment area. And so they're foregoing those revenues. They're not losing revenues, but they're not collecting them because those are being used to pay for the infrastructure improvements. But the state in crafting its legislation allowed those existing taxing districts to also grow their levies. To the same amount that the improvements are taking place inside the tax increment area. So they're able then to still respond to any service demands caused by growth inside the tax increment area. So it's not meant to harm the existing taxing districts, but it's also not meant necessarily benefit. The taxing districts beyond sort of the current way that property tax law in Washington state works. Yes.
On a slide further down, we talked about impact impact study. One of the examples of the impacts that you're looking at is on affordable housing.
Yes.
Can you give an example of what what would the impact of this be on affordable housing as a scenario?
Generally, you don't see the impacts with vacant land. But if you're redeveloping an area infill development and you're displacing. Affordable housing or affordable homes that are inside that area with new construction, you'd want to. You need to be able to identify mitigation plans for how you're going to accommodate. That displacement of affordable housing that exists in the TIA that's now going to be redeveloped. Maybe there's a portion of those of those new units are going to be affordable, but maybe not. And so it's really looking at those kinds of impacts.
Can Sue ask her question? So accounting nerd question. I know how we collect property tax from the county on a on a monthly basis. It just comes in a lump sum and I record it in the general ledger. How is the green portion of the taxes tracked? And monitored so that you know the exact amount that you're that you're getting out of this TIA?
Sure, so it's partly the reason why there's a six month lag time between when you can adopt the TIA. And when taxes actually will start to then flow to the jurisdiction. So the county can have the the proper software and really staff up to make sure that they're making those collections. But it's also, I think, incumbent upon the TIP sponsor to also track that to make sure you're getting sufficient revenues. So typically, what would happen is that you'd form a tax increment area. It would most likely be defined by a legal survey. So that even over time, as boundary line adjustments occur and sometimes taken away property, you can still track what's inside the TIA and what's not. And then it's just a matter of looking at the AB is frozen. At the time that the tax increment area ordinance is formed. So if it were formed in 2024, it would be based on the certified values in 2023. So that's the base. And then anything $1 over that base now gets applied to the the various levies that exist within that tax increment area. And so you have to just you track it separately, of course, and then. Yeah.
I'm not sure I should ask this question without knowing the answer. So all of the place, all the cities that you've worked with and and it sounds like half of the projects in the state you've had a hand in. How are they going and even those that you don't have a hand in are do any of these fail or are they all pretty successful or?
Well, this is new legislation in 2021, so we've only seen a few cities since they've adopted their tax segment area issued debt. And so the infrastructure is just now being completed. So on this list, city of Pasco I mentioned has already seen some results. Although the infrastructure is being planned and being installed over the next few years. It's really solidified that city's commitment and then development is occurring as a result of that commitment. So we're starting to see early success as a result of the tax increment area being formed in Pasco. Kirkland hasn't issued any debt yet, Shalane has not issued debt yet. College Place is getting ready to Blaine never formed a tax increment area. They took it all the way through the project analysis and decided not to form one during the cycle. Lakewood hasn't issued any debt yet, nor has Moses Lakes, since these are all just relatively fairly new. As they're still waiting to, they're all still waiting to make sure that development sufficiently catches up. To so that they're ready to go and development is ready to happen about the same time or quickly thereafter the improvements are put in. Then you're maximizing the revenue that you're able then to collect through tax increment area financing. Because you can only have that, you can only collect revenue for a period of no longer than 25 years. And that 25 years starts the day after you adopt your ordinance.
Quick related question, I think in your presentation, there was a note that you can have two TIAs, but they cannot overlap. So I'm curious to know if any of the cities here have had two areas or have all of them just had one?
Haven't seen anyone move forward with two tax increment areas at one time. There's we always have discussions with cities in terms of what the size of their tax increment area should be, what do they want it to be? First and foremost, you want it to be large enough to capture where you think development is going to happen. But outside of that, you may not want to look at just sort of speculative development. Maybe you want to reserve some capacity for yourself to form a second TIA sometime in the future. But we haven't had any that's actually moved forward with forming two at this point. Although they could, they'd be they'd have to be two distinct areas and then two different sets of of likely infrastructure that would support them.
Thank you. Can this be started after somebody's issued permits or does it have to be started before the permitting process?
It weakens the really the kind of the but for argument. Not to say that there hasn't been development that is ready to go, that has obtained all of its entitlements. But typically, when a developer gets their entitlements, they have a good sense. Or they know what the commitments are that they have to make and towards toward the infrastructure. You may if to do so, you may have some of the other junior taxing districts of which. Funds you're utilizing or taking away from them or because they're foregoing it. They may question is that may question your but for analysis if that was really necessary. In order to incentivize development. But there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing preventing it. But I think being good stewards of of the funds, especially the other taxing districts and how you're using them. And just like your own funds, you would, you want to make sure that you're not providing a gift for development. And that is truly something that was necessary in order to incentivize the development. And again, that's generally where TIP has gotten a black eye in some jurisdictions that you have mentioned. Is when they have been awarded funds that weren't typically necessary in order to incentivize the development. Any other questions? Exciting world of tax segment financing. I mean, really, I think the exciting part is if you have a development in your community that you've wanted to have, your community has wanted for years, but your market simply doesn't support it. And we find that everywhere that it is true, development should pay for their expenses. But that's only true to the extent that there's demand for that kind of development or your market can't support that kind of development. And if and we find TIP being utilized as a way to accelerate that desired development rather than waiting 20, 15 years into the future before the market catches up. So that you're able then provide those public improvements that are necessary for the development and make it a viable development now rather than. You know, 15, 20 years from now. Yes.
I just wanted to circle back on affordable housing. You mentioned that one potential. Effect that this can have is to make sure that people are looking at how it can displace affordable housing. But in your experience and your understanding of this tool for incentivizing development. Could it be used to incentivize affordable housing?
You can fund some affordable and one of the public improvements I didn't include in that laundry list. The state statute is longer than what I displayed on the on the presentation. You can put towards money from TIP towards affordable housing. I recognize that affordable housing that is exempt is also not going to generate property tax. So it's not going to fuel any of your tax increment area with funds to pay for the infrastructure improvements. Doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, it just means that there may be a component of your project. That you're using funds for not only to pay for affordable housing, but also you're taking away property and development that could actually generate property tax. Similarly, if you have a multifamily tax exemption, and I'm not sure if Squim does, but other cities have used that as a way to either promote. Certain density of development of, you know, five stories over one story of concrete or two stories of concrete. That comes with a certain development cost. In many cases, the lease revenues that that developers are able to receive from that don't pay for that construction method. And so you can't achieve that density. So some cities have used multifamily tax exemption by giving, you know, an eight year, 10 year, 12 years or more exemption against property taxes for certain types of development. You have to sort of evaluate that in comparison with tax increment financing, which is better in order to incentivize your development is to. Is it basically exempt property tax for a developer for certain kinds of development? Or is it better to use the taxes that are collected from the various jurisdictions and put that towards the infrastructure?
So we have formed a committee, of course, with various directors and whatnot. Sue, of course, is on it with some of our bond counsel from Seattle. Bob has a staff member or two and then and then some of us directors were meeting about. Well, we've about weekly, I guess, would be an easy way to kind of see it. And and again, not in any rush, but but moving, spending time on this so that we, if if it does seem to pencil and it seems to make sense. That we wouldn't miss the deadline of trying to get something in front of you by the, you know, later fall, winter.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your time, Stevie.
All right, so there's about 10 minutes until our regular session, so I'll go ahead and end the work session and we'll call us back at 6 o'clock for our regular meeting. Okay, I'll call go ahead and call us back to order.
Thank you, Mayor. Back from our break, staff is still available for questions as the council considers the next steps in direction.
Is there any further comments from? Oh, Joel, yes, Joel.
A quick question, if we weren't recording, do we need to have a? Yeah, do it all over again. It's all right, I I just, okay, so if anybody's listening to the recording for clarification. Counselor Downer asked about the fire marshal's comments about this public hearing. And so Joel came up to give us comments, take it away, Joel.
Joel Dressel, Building Fish on Fire. Joel Dressel, Building Fish on Fire Marshal, for the record. I'd have to look in the fire code, get the specific language, I'm not going to try to remember completely offhand, but it's either less than 30, or 30 or more, something to that effect, requires, once you're past that threshold, it requires two points of access. And those two points of access have to be a certain distance from each other. It does allow an exemption that if you're over that, up to another threshold, the homes could be sprinkled, and that's a possibility too. Now, that's, that's the fire code language, which, you know, is conflicted with our Squim Municipal Code language for that too. So, we've always gone with the more restrictive with what we've had. But, but per the fire code, I think with, I'd have to again, look at what this amendment is exactly and the way it's stated, but I believe it conforms with the fire code on that threshold. So, and I think the fire district would probably cite the fire code as well, you know, but they may have their opinions, you know?
Thank you.
Sure. Did you have a question, Becky? Any other comments from council? All right. Next steps from council, looks like there's some potential.
Let me take a shot at a motion here, that's obviously different, in light of this conversation, different than the proposed motion in the packet. Move to direct staff to continue to research the proposed revision to SMC 17.32.110 in, in light of questions asked during public comment, asked by the council in response to public comment.
I'll second that.
Are you clear on what that entails?
If I may summarize briefly for the council, I have heard the question of why 30 lots and the jump from four to 30, and providing a little more explanation on that. And then, also, the potential question around what happens to the cumulative impact of road capacity, when there may only be one way in, one way out currently to a lot. Did I get all questions? Am I missing any? And, and then confirmation on the fire code?
You certainly captured, I don't know if that's all the questions, we may have, have any more, but I think you've captured the enlightenment that I received in, with the public comment.
Thank you, council.
I also would like to add that, that it be explored also with how it's affecting private roads, that if a private road is the only, yeah, to capture, no, to reference what the struggles that the folks in Jenny Meadows have gone through, and their concerns for what could happen in the future. I'd also like to hear some more discussion on that, please.
I believe that was addressed.
Yeah, so, purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross. So, if we were confronted, as we were in the situation with Jenny's Meadows, where an application came in, and they needed to access private roads for their development, we have what we call a condition of approval, right? If, if their application is approved, we have in there a condition of approval that says they, they applicant must get the necessary permission for the size and the scope needed to accommodate their development from the appropriate private property owners. The city does not get involved in that. We don't facilitate that. That is solely between the applicant and the private property owners, whether it be, you know, they really like their application, and, you know, just go ahead and sign it over, whether they have to pay, the applicant has to pay them any money or any improvements, or the HOA simply says no, the city plays no role in that whatsoever.
Staff can provide you code citation of where that is, if, if you'd like to understand that, to have, have that in confirmation where the code is that the legal department is referring to.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm feeling like it's fairly clear at this time, so, thank you, but, appreciate it. And I also appreciate your framing of the motion, Councilor Butler, thank you.
All right. If staff have cleared directive, there's been a motion, and it has been seconded, is there any further discussion?
I, I'm still concerned, how did the HOA end up getting sued then, if, if they can say no?
The HOA did not get sued, they intervened in the applicant's lawsuit against the city.
Okay, so the city was sued, and the HOA intervened, and that's how they incurred costs.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Any opposed to the motion on the floor? All right, see, and then motion passes. All right, moving on to hearing number two, subject of this public hearing is the Q3 2024 Budget Amendments.
Sorry, Brandon, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm replaying the tape in my head. I don't think I included any kind of a timeframe, when we'd like to have that back, and I realize that we've got some time constraints on the, what's currently in place, so I don't know if, if that was sort of implied and understood, or if we need to be explicit.
I'm confident, Lindsay, I'll, I'll take the opportunity to speak for you. I'm confident that we can work on either bringing this back to you at the next meeting, or if we find that we need more time, we would bring back an extension of the interim controls next meeting.
Thank you, that, that was my intention, but I realized as I thought about it, I just, I implied it and didn't make it explicit. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, congrats again, and council members. This is the second touch, second and formal touch and public hearing on additional amendments to the 2024 budget. There have been no changes to the, any of the recommended amendments since the last time we spoke, which was at the first meeting in September. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I do want to clarify that my recommendation was wrong. The staff's recommendation is just to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 budget. Any questions? Want me to cover any of the amendments again? Good to go?
Adopting the 2025 budget tonight?
No, this is amending the 2024 budget.
Yeah, I understand.
But we're going to talk about that in a little bit.
Yes.
This is a different matter.
Thank you.
Questions from council? All right, move on to public comment. This is a public hearing, all audience members wishing to make comment, will be a lot of three minutes to speak. When is your time to speak? Please give your name, address, and whether you reside in the City of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. City clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
And no one has signed up for public comment this evening.
All right, now, we'll now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any further council discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this matter, and we'll move to council action, and if we're ready for a motion.
I move to adopt this ordinance amending the 2024 budget.
I second that motion.
All right, we've been seconded, any further discussion? Any opposed? See, and then motion passes.
Thank you so much, council.
Thank you.
And number three, amendment to Squim Municipal Code number 3.68, rates and fees to add Swisher rehearsal hall rental fees. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, I'm hoping to be as quick as Sue was on hers. Tonight before you is the discussion, the public hearing on the new rates for the Swisher versus rehearsal hall rentals.
This is modifying Chapter 3.68, rates and fees. As I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago, this is basically setting up a new rate structure for the rental of the rehearsal hall only. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Public comment, all audience members wishing to make public comment, will be a lot of three minutes to speak. When is your time to speak? Please give your name, address, and whether you reside in the city limits of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. City clerk?
No one has signed up to comment on this agenda item.
Okay, go ahead and close the public comment portion. Is there any council discussion? See, and then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move on to council action.
I move to adopt the attached ordinance amending Squim Municipal Code 3.68, rates and fees to add fees for the rental of Swisher Hall rehearsal spaces at the James Center for the Performing Arts.
I second that.
That's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, see, and then motion passes. All right, item made, consent agenda, city clerk?
Items on tonight's consent agenda are claim vouchers totaling $1,127,607.41, City Council meeting minutes from the September 9, 2024 meeting, and the Kitsap County-Evoc interlocal agreement.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any opposed? See, and none, motion passes. All right, item 9A, Squim Municipal Code 8.20, fireworks and Sky Lanterns Code Amendment, this will be a first touch. Mr. Joel?
Joel Dressel, Building Fish on Fire Marshal, for the record. So, tonight we got proposed amendments to Chapter 820 to ban the sale of fireworks within city limits. The amendment makes minor changes to Chapter 824, and removes associated fees out of Chapter 3.68. If approved, the amendment will take effect one year after adoption, as required per state law, and will not prohibit the sale of fireworks until the fall of 2025. So, public hearing is required, and staff recommend City Council to schedule a public hearing for the next available meeting and draft a proposed ordinance. Is there any questions?
I, I think just regarding the process, like the public hearing process, when council motions to have a public hearing scheduled, what kind of, like, marketing, and how, how do, how does the city let residents know that a public hearing is coming up regarding something that they might be concerned about?
I can answer that question.
Thank you.
So, 10 days before the public hearing, we submit a notice to the Peninsula Daily News, and that's the notification.
Is it put on the city's website?
It is not.
Could you do it for this one thing?
So, for the record, Christina Nelson Gross, could we do it for this one thing? Yes, if council were to provide that direction. However, I would be a little bit reluctant to create that precedent for staff and things going forward, and I would ask council to consider that. I have the utmost faith that our local news reporters are listening to this and will report on these various things, so I would trust them to help get the word out as well. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Kathy, I think additional, maybe ask Heather, direct this toward Heather, but we all, we do publish the agenda a certain amount of time before each meeting, and that's public, it's, it's on the website, and now with the new email notifications, there's a broader distribution.
That is correct.
The agenda doesn't come out till Thursday or Friday, so it's only like a three-day notice. I'm, I just appreciate the answer, that's what I wanted to hear, that's, but I'm just saying, the agenda is not published too far ahead of time.
No, but it is in additional, in addition to the 10 days with the, the local newspaper, then there's an additional effort by the city to get the news out. So, I think we're, we don't need to create more work for staff.
No, I just wanted a yes or no answer, not a judgment. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Do you have another?
No, I just wanted to say, we all got a letter, and this council deals with facts, and the letter that was sent to us was not factual. It said that the tribe is selling fireworks. They are not, much less illegal fireworks. It said that, that what the fireworks that are sold by our tribe are illegal, and that if we ban the sale of fireworks, people will bring illegal fireworks into Squim to shoot them off. And I, I don't think that that's very helpful or factual. And I just want to remind people that this council deals in facts. Thanks.
You have a comment, Rachel?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the next available hearing date.
Second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Any opposed? See, and then motion passes. All right, 9B, Squim Municipal Code 12.16, work obstructing public places code amendment, first touch.
Someone turned it off on me, so I'm gonna start over again. Introduce myself, Paul Bucic, Public Works Director. Tonight before you is part of our code update, Squim Municipal Code 12.16, work obstructing public places. This is the first touch. This code has not been touched since 1977, and it references positions and titles that no longer exist, as well as just needs some general cleaning up. Its impacts, work that's being done in public places such as our streets and our parks. It's fairly simple, and you can see that in your package, that is all of one page in length, and it's really just kind of cleaning things up. I don't think it's necessary to go through every piece of this, so I'll be happy to answer any questions, but what we are asking is that you, council, waive the second touch on this matter because of the simplicity of it, and ask staff to bring an ordinance back at the next available meeting on the consent agenda.
Just a quick question, could you give an example of what work obstructing public places means? Or like, an example of what it would happen?
Think about utility work, that goes on in the right of way.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if I want to vote for this, to give up what little power the mayor has.
We would be happy to send you all of the permit applications and relieve our load.
Any further discussion?
Go ahead, make the motion, move to waive the second touch on this matter, and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next available meeting.
And I will second that.
All right, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Any opposed? See, and then, motion passes. See, and then motion passes. Item 9C, municipal code, Squim Municipal Code 20.30 Fee-in-Lew, first touch.
Thank you. This one's a little more interesting than the last one because it's something new for the city. Essentially, fee-in-loue allows us to work with the developer to identify those components of the frontage improvements, another work that we would have them pay us the value for that so that we can build those as a part of a much larger project. So this is a good example is we're going to do a block-to-block curb gutter sidewalks. But someone comes in and they want to build on one, three, or four, or five of those lots. Let's say it's big enough that they actually have substantial frontage improvements that they're required to build. If they come in before us, and then we come in after them, we have to tie into what they build. And it may not be in the exact location or the right grade that we want it to be at. So that becomes a challenge for us to try and make it look uniform and give us the aesthetics we're looking for. Another good example is we have a developer who is willing to do a fee-in-loue right now on a major development, which I'd rather not say who they are, except that they're willing to dedicate 30 feet of frontage along a road that we all like to realign because it's not really a great road. I think you know which one I'm talking about. We would like to have them build the half of the road, but the problem is on one side or one part of the road closer to a major road, the grade is such that they can't build their half through there without getting onto the adjoining property. Now, we've had conversations with the two adjoining property owners about doing this realignment. One of them is very much in favor. The other one feels like, well, I don't know. So I can't have them go in there, and I can't get those easements from those other two owners yet. But I do want to get the value that they would have to pay to build it themselves so we can use that as the Support the City project because it's just going to take a little more time to get what we need from the other two property owners. That's a good example of what a fee-in-loue does. The one cautionary note that we always look at this is if we can't and don't plan on being able to spend the money in five years, we would have to turn the money back. So this isn't an automatic. This is we look at our capital program, our capital projects, look at the projects we have that are fully funded, that this could contribute to, or that we're pretty confident we're going to get funding going after grants for those projects, and we would take this money and use it as part of our match, our required match for the grant because it's secured funding. And then we have five years to initiate the project and get it moving. That's the gist of it, and you're welcome to, if you haven't already looked through the fee-in-loue. This one's a little more detailed because it's all of two pages instead of one, like the last one we just spoke of. The importance of this one, though, is that it gives us flexibility and options to work with developers to make sure we can further our goals and our needs on our capital projects. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Paul. I think I'm getting, I think it makes a lot of sense. Just want to clarify in the point 040 Director Determination section. Is it, is it a kind of a conversation with the developer? The developer may come to the city and say, we'd like to give you a fee in lieu of, or is it the other way around where the city's saying, you have to do this eventually, but we've got these larger plans, and we'd like to talk to you about doing this fee in lieu of option. Is there an incentive disincentive process here?
That's a good question. It's, it's a, it's a conversation between the two. When we are pretty confident we have a project and we're going to be building it, we will tell them as a part of their development conditions that they will pay that equal value to the city, and they don't have to build it. Nine times out of 10, they like that because then they know it's a uniform look, and they don't have to take on the burden of having that built and do the design for it. On, in other cases, sometimes they will come to us, and we will look at it. Usually if they come to us, we've already made the determination it doesn't make sense because we're not going to, we can't guarantee that that's going to be there. And taking their money means good things for them if we don't build it because they give it back. So we don't like giving back money. No jurisdiction does. We want to make it work.
This does not in any way imply or mean lowering or ignoring any standards, correct?
Absolutely not.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Not hearing any other questions. What we are requesting, because of the nature of this and the straightforward nature of it, is that council make a motion to waive the second touch on the matter, and again, direct staff to bring back an ordinance for this new city code section for a fee-in-loue on the consent agenda at the next available meeting.
I'll make that motion. I moved away the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance for a new city code section, SMC 20.30 Fee-in-Loue on the consent agenda for the next available meeting.
I second that.
Move and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? See, and then motion passes.
Thank you, council.
All right, item 9D, Gerhart Park Structure Surplus.
Something that has been a long time coming is conversation about what to do with the older Gerhart House and then the outbuildings. In your packet tonight, we are requesting that council authorize us to surplus those, those buildings. Our first attempt will be to auction them off next spring after the ground solidifies so we don't have to worry about anything tearing up the land. Should we not receive any bids on these structures, then we would move forward with the demolition of it. In your packet, there's a whole bunch of photographs. And first off, I apologize for the little dog that photobombed one of the photos. He was on a long leash, and I didn't realize how long it was. The second thing is that there's an awful lot of material we use this building for, for storage, for parks functions. We are in the process right now of emptying the big barn structure. We have a few things in there, and we're moving that plus the internal material in the old house into the metal building in the back. The metal building in the back has a whole bunch of accumulated debris, I'll put it that way, and that we're cleaning out and getting rid of and cleaning it up so we can move everything in there and keep it in safe, dry conditions. Other than that, the goal here is to take the house and find someone who wants to move it, rehabilitate it, and make it available for use. Once again, it's not something the city can take on, we don't think, because of the cost for doing so would be prohibitively high. And having that in a park doesn't make a lot of sense. We already have the other house that's in the park land, too, and it's in much, much better condition. This one, the best use for it is to find somebody who's in the business of moving structures like this and rehabilitating it. It's, it's more than likely going to turn out to be, I mean, it could be someone's vacation house. It could be put on a lot in the city and rehabilitated and used for housing at a lower price point. We're figuring that the value of the house could be anywhere from, if someone were to bid on it, because there's quite a bit of expense to pick it up and move it. It's about $35,000 to $50,000 to pick it up and transport it and put it back on another foundation on another lot. So I hesitate actually to say how much we think we're going to get for it, but we're going to look for the maximum dollars. One of the greatest values isn't necessarily the value we get from the structure. It's the value we get from not having to take it down and haul everything away. Looking at the outbuildings out there, from a structural perspective, they're not worth anything. It would cost us more money to haul them away. However, if you ever walked out there, you see that some of those boards, they're quarter-round. They're old boards, and they have a lot of aesthetic value. Someone could use them for a project. They can build, I don't know, their person cave out of it, however they want to look at it. Being very politically correct on that terminology now. So it can be done, it can be used for a lot of things, and we think there are people who are going to be interested in acquiring it. We are going to require them to take it down by hand. We're not going to have any heavy equipment in there. And we're going to require them to clean the material up and get it out. Hopefully that's not too much of a burden. We're also going to look to see if we can auction them off in separate lots because trying to auction them all at once in one lot, I'm not sure we're going to find somebody willing to buy all of it. But there's smaller buildings and bigger buildings, and the smaller buildings, someone may say, yeah, I can use all that material, and I'm going to pay you X number of dollars for that. Again, the value in this is us not having to disassemble, tear it all out and get rid of it because we do think there is some value in the wood itself. So there's, there is no requirement for a public hearing as such. After answering your questions, if you're comfortable, we would like to ask you once again to waive a second touch on this and authorize us to staff to proceed with the surplus of the older Gerhart House and outbuildings. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have on it.
I do have a question. It might be in the packet, and I might have glazed over it. But my question is, once it goes up for auction, what timeline are you looking at if nobody decides to bid on it? Yeah, you, yeah.
Yeah, so I did not put in there how long we were going to wait because if there's, there's a chance we might go for a second go-around. It's all going to be market-dependent. What we are anticipating is that once we quote auction off and sell the different ones we want, it cleared off the site within 90 days. If you're doing this stuff by hand, or if they convince us that a small load, ground load, piece of equipment could come in and safely disassemble it, we'll consider that. We have a few months to figure out exactly how we're going to formulate this. At that point, though, we're, we're going to move forward and take them all down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank Paul for, this is, as you've heard me say to this council before, we've, you've supported us purchasing the parks necessary, the actual acreage we need. Now we're trying to move forward to make those parks more accessible and usable by our residents. This is one of the first initiatives to do that, and it's a beautiful park, and people just don't know it. They can, they need parking. We just need to start moving forward with a development plan there, and this is the beginning of that. So I thank him and Hannah for taking that initiative for our residents.
Paul, if the house were to be relocated in the City of Squim, what's the code requirements for a new foundation and placing an old structure like this somewhere else in the city? Is it onerous? Is it like building a new, starting from the ground up, or?
Well, I think you're asking the wrong person. You need to ask Joel, who left.
Okay.
But basically, yeah, the foundation needs to meet current standards. We would require them to bring electrical up to code, plumbing up to code, insulation up to code. Having gone through the house a couple of times, it's interesting, the kitchen, as you saw, has a total gut and redo. I mean, there's, yeah, the only thing that would outlast that house is that old refrigerator. That will live to the end of the universe because those old ones will. But you see, it's also interesting, it occurred to me on my second go-around walking through there is there's three rooms upstairs. One of them has this kind of funky kind of closet. They sort of quasi-built. None of the other rooms have closets. So this is back in the day when armoires were the modern way of doing things. There's an awful lot of work. The roofing needs to be replaced. I'm sure that they'll find some things on the roof that will need some change. I will say that Joel and I did pry off the access point, and he was brave enough to stick his head with a flashlight underneath the house to see how it's supported. It needs a completely new, new foundation, and there'll need to be some structural work on that. Didn't look like any kind of termite rod or anything else. But yeah, it's on different pile supports here and there and beams, and yeah.
Where I was going with that, and just creatively, if, if in the process of soliciting bids, we would be able to incentivize somebody to move it within the City of Squim and redevelop it for affordable housing. And if there'd be some way to structure the auctioning process that would give somebody the incentive to do that.
That's, that's a very interesting thought, and I appreciate that. Now you've got my head going on thinking about this. Well, if they locate it in the City of Squim, maybe we'll take their auction price and reduce it by a certain dollar value as an incentive to be in Squim. I don't know. I mean, I need to work with-
Waive some fees or something, but anyway, yeah.
Waive fees? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Waive fees?
Pardon my language. I let that slip.
Oh, my goodness.
Anyway, the fact that you got your head spinning is what I was hoping for, so thank you.
Mission accomplished. Thank you.
Here's a useless tidbit. In the, in the old houses, they were taxed on their closet space. The smaller the closet, the fewer the closets, the lower their taxes. Because I lived in a house in Cleveland, 1930. It had a fake closet in one bedroom and a very tiny little linen closet in a hallway, and that was it.
All right, well, thank you. I did not, I'll, I'll remember that from now on.
Well, I don't know if it's true. I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
I thought we dealt in facts.
Wait, wait, I thought it was truth.
I have a question. Could you remind me, was it Gerhart or Joseph Keeler? Which one of those was donated to the city and which one was sold to, or purchased by the city?
Gerhart was donated to the city. Keeler was a combination of purchase and donation.
Okay, so, okay, so.
We've taken a look at the donation, and the only restriction on that is if we ever use it, don't want to use it for a park, then it gets transferred over to the SAC, which no longer exists. SARK, thank you. Hannah knows that one, so.
For purposes of the, of the record and the folks that are listening that don't know what SARK means, could you expand on that acronym, please?
Squim Aquatic Recreation Center.
It was the Y before the Y was the Y.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
For my time, but thank you, Sue.
And me, too. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Anything further?
If there are no more questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. All right, not hearing any. I move to waive the second touch on this matter and authorize staff to proceed with the, oh, gosh, I can't read it. Surplus of the older Gerhart House and outbuildings.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further, anything further? Any opposed? See, and then motion passes.
Thanks, Paul.
9E, City Managers' Proposed 2025 Budget.
Here we go again. Let the fun begin. Sue's done a ton of work, as of course, with her staff. We all have, I guess, but really hats off to Sue.
And her team.
That's what I said. So for sure, this is a first touch. It's called a proposal for that reason. And you saw in the cover letter, Sue and I are happy to meet with any of you individually, one-on-one, between now and the time that we need to actually have you make a motion to accept. But, but let me just turn the time over to Sue to kind of walk you through that.
Well, it's, it's September, so it's budget kickoff season. In your materials, you have Matt Hughes's transmit a letter to you and the community, and you've got an ordinance with the actual budget by fund, and you have a presentation in your materials as well. I'm here to answer any questions, but just to remind you of our calendar is we provided the digital budget book to you on Friday, September 13. You've got your overview materials that you have reviewed for tonight. The month of October, we are more than happy to meet with you and answer any questions you have, if that's in individual meetings, or if you just want to give us a call or an email. I'm sure if you've got a question, maybe your other council members would have a question, so I'd be happy to share those answers with everybody. And then we got our public hearings in November. And then require final budget approval by December 31 to do business the next day. Now, on that note, we do have a couple of clarifications. Matt did a bunch of research on our municipal funding request from the YMCA. This was a new request this year, and we took what, part of Friday and over the weekend to do some, to do some research. This is not in the budget as of yet. It is not an $85,000 request per year for the youth navigator. It's 42.5. It's a $42.5,000 request per year. So that's 42.5 over two years. So Matt got some clarity on that request. And I just wanted to tell you, the reason why it's not in the budget is because we were having a heck of a time balancing the budget first. But also, I just, I wanted to keep the budget static with previous requests. And put this particular policy decision for, for council to decide. Matt, any more color on that?
No, thank you. So as you know, we've really tried to clean up the process for folks outside of the city to ask for city funds. We call it the municipal grant program. And we've created applications and, and guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. You'll see in the transmit letter, a brief overview of, of what this year looks like with grant requests. And a hot link to, to a new spreadsheet that we created so that you could see year over year and some trending and whatnot there.
And it looks like this.
Yeah.
It's going to be linked to this.
It's just a regular, you know, Excel spreadsheet. And, and this new one is in there as a new one. When Wendy Bart, who's the CEO of the YMCA was filling out our form, she checked the box. For, she's asked for 85,000, but checked the box for two years. What she thought that meant was that that 85 would be divided over two, not that we needed 85 each year. So that's why the math is what Sue just shared with you. It's half of 85 each year. And then there was, there was other ones I, not that we need to belabor this because there's a lot more. Information in other parts of this budget, but as long as we're on this grant program. We made it, we went way out of our way to when we didn't hear from certain kind of repeat customers. I had Marin send, I think we, we did it three different times. We reminded people of the deadline twice on the front of the deadline, one on the back of the deadline. And if they didn't respond after three times, we just said, did not apply or did not respond or whatever. So there's one or two of those, but I'm not going to bend someone's arm to take money. So anyway, we, we thought three reminders were enough. I believe that's it. We are looking into other cities. To make, to see how we compare relative to our grant, you know, municipal grant funding program. And it seems like early, we're still collecting some information every budget. It's hard to kind of find the same components and to match apples what's apples. But it looks like, and I'll let you respond to this because I know you did, but it sounds like we're really close to.
We're actually above, above or better than some of the, I, I was having a heck of a time finding. Human services funding line items in people's budgets. So I asked MRSC, my good old buddy Lowell, did some research and he found four specific cities. One was Sea Tax, so large, Renton, Bainbridge Island, kind of our size. And then there was one other. And a lot of the cities where he could find a policy based it upon a percentage of the general fund budget. One was 1% of the general fund budget, one was 1.5, one was considerably lower than 1% of the budget. And this city of Squim is at 1.6%. So I felt really good, like it just, the temperature felt, felt right. So we've looked at that research. If you're curious or want more detail, I'm happy to share that. But as far as taking the temperature on what we spend for human services, that's, I thought, I thought we came out pretty good. So would like. Direction from a majority of council on how to move forward with this YMCA request. It would be the, I believe it would be the second youth navigator on the peninsula.
Yeah, so I can give a little more clearance. I met Reagan. I'm kind of jumping into my city manager part, but I spent some time with Reagan. From the school district and then of course called Wendy. There is a person, a faculty member that is responsible for the Benny. I'm going to say it wrong.
Yeah.
McKenna Vento program, of course, the kids that are homeless or struggling. So they have the responsibilities to do that and they, she, Reagan feels like she does. Then the YMCA received a grant for a navigator to dedicate to the school as well. So when, when I met with Reagan on Thursday, she said, well, we have two. I'm not sure what, what this new one's for. So that's when I called Wendy. And she said, well, the grant that we, for the navigator that we provide the school district. Its funding is running out in January-ish, December-ish. And so we're just kind of looking different places for cash to be able to extend that person. So, so they do have kind of one and a half or two already. One of them is running, gonna, you know, the YMCA navigator will be running out. That grant will be expiring in December. So she was just looking around.
So I'd appreciate some direction from council. Like I said, it looks like it's more like of a $42,000 request than an $85,000 request, which is a lot more. Feasible. Yes, Kathy?
When we spoke earlier about my concerns, it's not really a concern, it's a clarification. The school district had that job posted on there until recently. Because I copied it and I sent it to my son. So what is the different, did the Y get that, that position? And now they're looking for funding? That's my little, I'm a little bit confused.
We were as well.
Yeah, I don't know how else to say it. So what I heard was, and I'm not sure the timings of the grants or whatever. But what Wendy told me was they got a grant. I think there may have been something about the timing of that. And so it was maybe a two-year grant and they couldn't fill it the first year and now they are. So I, I, I'm really not sure. I can get all, somebody knows all that detail, probably Marin, but certainly Wendy. So, but that's, that's what I know is that the grant that pays for the salary. For the navigator from the YMCA that services the school is expiring in January. So they're just looking for an extension of the school year. You know, the salary that would cover the navigator for the rest of the school year.
So they're an employee of the Y, but they work at the school?
Sounds like yes.
Could you clarify that? Because that's a lot of money for just one semester. I know you said it's two years, but I'm confused as to why the school district had it posted and now we get. Communication from the YMCA saying they have the same position.
Yeah, just a slightly different, so the YMCA navigator does more of the wraparound services and, and, and some extensions. Of youth issues. Whereas the one that the Benny Vento, one that sets a school is just much more narrow and I think more homeless centered.
But who funded the Y last year?
It's a grant that they received. Yeah.
Department of Children and Youth and Families, DCAF?
Yes, it's that Youth and Family Resource is the name of the position.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I can have a couple of questions. So my first question, I'll try not to lose my other one. My first question, when, like when we budget money for the Squim Health and Housing Collaborative, right? Like there is information that they bring back to us. They keep track of all of their expenses.
Yeah.
Right? And so.
Yeah, they've got to report back on progress towards their metrics.
So everything's accounted for.
Yeah.
And so that would be, if this was approved, it would be the same thing.
Yeah.
Why they'd have to report back and everything would need to be accounted for.
And I'm not familiar with what those metrics would be, but our city manager's officer would hammer that out.
Okay.
But didn't they lay out some measures in the application?
Yeah.
Improved graduation rates, improved student family.
The administrative aspect of like showing where.
The funding would be used for salaries and benefits. Yeah, I think that's pretty easy to show and necessary work-related expenses.
They have to pay for an auditor, just like our other organization, 10% for auditing.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Just the Y, I mean.
I have a question.
Yep.
So. If I'm understanding what you said earlier, Sue, currently the city of Squim is. Our spending level on human services is at 1.6%. And this would then be, this, this is a new request, which would be above, this is above the 1.6%.
Correct.
Uh huh. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Just, thank you for that. And then you were saying that the other cities. In the other cities that you gave examples, our number was the highest? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And if you don't want to make a decision on this tonight, that's, that's fine. We can bring it back another time, but yeah, um, yes, Vicki.
How many percentage points does $42,000 put us at then?
Thank you. Now you're asking me to do math in my head.
Well, you can do that if you want, but. Home, yeah, is it, is it, do we, is it that big of a deal if it's one point, you know?
I, thank you for the follow-up question, Vicki.
Youth homelessness is a problem in our community and it's all of our problems. So I think that whatever we can do, sorry about my voice, whatever we can do to help those, it's not their fault, you know?
So that would be Vicki's direction and do we have a majority of folks that just want us to see? You know, want us to get it in the budget?
I never got to ask my second question.
Oh.
Hurry, before you forget. My question is, so this navigator position is more like a wraparound service. But we also have Swim and Healthing, Swim Health and Housing Collaborative that also has.
Yeah.
Wraparound services. So. Was Oldycap a part of the?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. There's just a lot.
Swirling around there, isn't there? Yeah.
And besides the ones that you're paying for, I mean, you're, you're identifying the ones that you are allocating money for. There's all kinds of other services, the care team and the other teams. I mean, there's religion, you know, church groups that come together and meet monthly and, and talk about. Services to address the need in the community, et cetera, et cetera. There's a, you know, besides just the ones that you know that are in our budget or, so, yeah, there's.
So I guess I would just want more information. I think Kathy brought up the 42,000. Like they, they made it sound like they're working for the school. But I just would want to know, they don't just work like the school year, right? It would go into the summer and throughout the school year. That's what I would want to know.
So Rachel, looks like you want more information. Kathy, looks like you want more information.
I think we should help these kids, but I, I just need a little more information.
Okay, Rachel.
I would like to see how it, I guess I'm in the wanting more information camp also in that I would like to see more about how. I'm sorry, I don't have it right here in front of me and like, how much are we currently spending on human services as a total? And how much is this extra? And then where does this put this, where, you know, how does this all shake out? And it's in, I'm, I see you're showing me something.
I can, I can just put it in an email to council after this. And then what I'll probably do is have you tell me what specific questions you would like to, to have answered. So for example, I'll, I'll update the spreadsheet, send that out, send you an email, give me your questions. And then we can arrange to get those answered for you at some time in, which is what October is for.
All right.
Right? Questions, comments and concern. So that's my game plan forward. I heard three people, I'm, do I have a general consensus that you kind of just want some more information, some more details? I'm seeing Nicole nod. So, okay, we got four.
And I would, I would add that as well with the. I'd want the Y to understand that we are favored, we, we want to try and do this.
You got it.
We just have questions that in terms of our responsibility, if you'll need to be answered.
Okay.
But for them to hear that we're.
Considering it. Yes, Vicki.
And maybe, sorry, maybe it would help if the type font were a little bit bigger. Because I think a lot of the things you guys are asking are here in this application, but it's like eight.
In the app, I know, the application is so tiny. So plan forward, we're going to get you more information. I'm going to send you an email tomorrow prompting you to give me your questions. Responding just to me, not responding all. And we'll work on tracking that down for you and getting those questions answered at some time in October. Does that, do I got thumbs up here? Okay, sounds good. I don't know what audit you're talking about.
When we give money to the other organizations, they just have to spend, the audit costs 10%.
So there's an, there's an admin.
Fee. When it's $121,000 last year, they had to pay $12,000 if they had an audit.
It was administration of the project, or excuse me, administration of the contract. So United Way, United Way herds all the six cats that we give money to. Because it's not, because it's not seven different agencies doing all sorts of different stuff. It's a lot more simple to administer. They just give me an invoice and I pay the invoice and then we follow up and get reporting requirements satisfied from them. Okay? All right. I think I have a plan forward. Great. Over for that item.
All right, nothing further from council on that. Move to 9F, 2025 proposed rates and fees, municipal code 3.68.
All right, you also have a council cover on our proposed 2025 rates and fees, updating chapter 3.68. You have a detailed presentation and an ordinance in your materials. This is the last of a three-year process of, of. Increasing utility rates by just 3% each. So I think that's been a good process. It allows us kind of some long-term, long-term stability in our rates. Think we'll probably suggest that for some time next year. But again. I, I'm here to answer any questions. Were there any questions you had about changes in specific fees? Okay, and you're familiar with the process, the strike through and the underlying. I did want to say that we had some Swisher Hall fees that were adopted tonight. I'm going to be, you will see those updated in the November material. So those will be added as fees are already in place. The other thing that I wanted to let you know is site construction permits. On projects, development projects over a million bucks. We are taking a hard and fast look at those. We are probably going to be coming to you sooner rather than later. Currently, those fees are based upon a percentage of the value of the development. And according to Paul. That's not a very good way to figure out fees for development costs or for, for developments. So we're in the process of analyzing those. You can expect to see recommendations in the future for kind of just revamping the way we do that. And then I think Joel mentioned something about getting rid of the fireworks permits, fees and stuff. We'll incorporate any of those changes as well. Were there any questions you had on anything? Most of the time, we're just updating it for hourly costs, right? People get raises, their contracts are signed. Any, any other, any questions? And some, some, sometimes the process changed too, which can shorten the process or lengthen the, the time it takes to deliver a service.
I have a question about the transactional fees on miscellaneous utility fees.
Yes.
Why the amount of $350 was decided? Because I'm starting to see this trend in retail and other places too, where they're starting to. We're going to charge you 3% if you use your credit or debit card. And historically, it's always just been the cost of doing business.
Yeah, so the, some of these fees are new. We in the finance department kind of said, okay, what's, what's the cost of the average transaction? Most single-family residents have a $100 utility bill. We didn't want to charge those fees on that. We figure the easier it is to pay. We didn't want to charge those fees on that. We figure the easier it is to pay, the better it is for everybody. That means we get paid on time and they get their utilities, right? So, um, we increased the level at which the, a fee would hit. And no fees are charged to any, um, utility customers if they, if they pay over the phone. There's just certain over the counter transactions that's required by Tyler. And again, we didn't want to burden everybody because actually if we, um, if we have to, if we have to, it's, it, it's, it's two postings instead of one posting. So in order to post, uh, credit card fee and let's say a permit fee, we got to make two different process. We do two different processes and cash sharing, and that just takes up time for everybody. So we picked a higher threshold above which, um, we would only charge that fee. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So your regular utility customer just paying their regular monthly bill wouldn't be impacted by this.
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise that discourages things like auto pay and.
Absolutely. Yeah. Anything else? Again, any questions, comments or concerns? We can talk about it in, anytime you want. I'm here for you.
Thanks, Sue.
All right. Item 10, youth liaison report.
Okay. For the purposes of the record, this is Malia Nelson, uh, youth liaison. Homecoming week at the high school is underway. Uh, we have our game on Friday and our dance on Saturday. So, and tonight is our senior parent night. So parents of seniors in the grade will go to the cafeteria and get a bunch of information about graduation requirements and what applications for colleges might look like. The Boys and Girls Club is having their annual auction in November. I'm not sure the day or time, but that's something to look out for. Interact in collaboration with the food bank on Halloween day is doing Boo Hunger again. So that's, uh, the high school and the food bank's annual food drive. I'm not quite sure where we're planning on driving. Last year it was two streets out by Sunland or two or three streets out by Sunland. So I can get specific streets maybe closer to the date. The, on the 26th is the high school college fair. And on the first of October, it is students opportunity to take the ASVAB. So for students looking more into the military option, um, they'll take this test so they can hopefully gain placement. On the fifth of October, the Clough County Fire Department number three is holding a public safety fair at the Guy Cole Center. So that's an all family event. People can attend. There's going to be fire trucks there, um, bring your kids. So I have a small report from the school board. Um, they're thinking of potentially putting together a task force to limit phone usage in schools. So we might see some of that in the future. And so recently we've been attempting to fill the second youth liaison position. So some of the things that we've done to advertise that is announcing on the public announcements in the morning. And also, um, Rachel came and visited our leadership class. Um, and we can talk more about this in open council discussion, but some things in process or I'm thinking about, um, is maybe doing an online advertisement, sort of like a social media type thing, just because it's more accessible to young people. And I'm also thinking of doing a video announcement on our weekly video board. Any questions?
I think me and Kathy are going to do a TikTok video for you, right?
No. I have ideas.
And you don't need a phone, just pass notes like I did.
I have a really quick, uh, addendum slash follow-up. Um, I just wanted to thank you, Malia, for bringing up the, um, uh, public safety fair on October 5th. Um, that should be a really excellent day for everybody. I am going to be there, but not in city council mode, but in my other, um, capacity. And just supporting folks, learning about, um, homesteading and ways to be resilient and to take care of themselves in the event of, um, uh, it as, as our, as, uh, in, in big events, but also as our, um, as our lives change and our, our climate changes and all of those things. So I'm really excited. I'm looking forward to that event. And I'll be there, but not as a city councillor. So I hope folks come out to that. Thank you.
Same, manager.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I will, um, say that currently we don't have an applicant for another student liaison, which is why we're putting some extra efforts with it. And we've been working with Sean and with Reagan on that. So, before I get started, uh, with my city manager report and going down all the bullet points, I've asked, uh, Emily Stednik, our HR director, to provide counsel, just a very quick overview of our recent Gallup, uh, employee engagement survey. This is kind of a satisfaction thing. She's just got five quick slides for you, but, uh, it's, it, it's really, um, remarkable. What we're hearing, the number of people we're hearing from, et cetera, et cetera, from our residents or, uh, employees. I'll let you take it from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Again, Emily Stednik, Human Resources. Thanks for the time tonight to share, um, a high level overview of the work we do on employee engagement. Uh, many of you have received reports like this in the past. This is our third consecutive year partnering with Gallup to, um, survey our employees. As you know, our staff groups are very diverse. You can see in this picture, they have very different jobs that take a different skillset, background, certification, um, years of experience, et cetera, et cetera. So to find a workplace that really meets the needs in order to serve our community can be hard. And that's why we really rely on feedback of the staff in order to, uh, work towards that. So again, just high level overview. Hopefully, just continue to look at those beautiful faces. Oh, yep. Okay. High level. So, um, our engagement mean this year was 4.09. So that is a raw number on a scale of one to five. So the average of all of our questions that we ask on a scale of one to five, the average is 4.09. You can see that that is a 70th percentile rank among local governments. So if you line up all the local governments in the database, which is 202,000 respondents, we would be like number 70 in that line. So pretty great percentile rank overall. Uh, we also had our participation increase this year from 85% to 87%, which was an increase of eight respondents, as you can see. For me, this is, this is the best number, not any of the scores, but just to see that our employees are engaged enough that they actually respond to the survey at 87% completion. Whether it's good news or bad news, they care enough to share their thoughts. And so that to me is always, the number one celebration for this. And again, that, that number built. So a quick overview of how Gallup builds their survey. There are 12 core questions that Gallup asks. And they have tons of research and time and years and experts that go into this theory, but, um, there's four levels of the engagement hierarchy. The bottom, the basic needs. Employees know what they're doing and they got the tools they need to do it. That's the basic bottom. And then individual, how does this help me as an individual? The teamwork questions, how do I work together with my team? And then the very top is that self-actualization. Do I have room to grow? Am I learning? Am I able to further my career here at the city? So these are our top, uh, 12 scores. There's a lot of data on the slide, but just as a, as an overview, you can see the number or the, uh, question, obviously. And then the respondents, about 82-ish. Some people skipped some questions. Uh, the current mean is the number. So again, on a scale of one to five, what the average score was. And then the color coding is based on our percentile rank. So how do we relate to other local governments? You can see that Q5, um, my supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person. That one had a significant increase designated by the triangle. That went up 0.23%. Everything else stayed pretty consistent, pretty steady, um, overall high scores. There are also a series of questions that we as the city, um, management have decided are important to seek additional information. So above kind of the Gallup 12 in that triangle, what are additional things that we care about, um, tracking and, and want our staff to know? This comes from fairness, safety, cooperation, uh, future with the city. And you can see here that there are four questions that went up significantly with those four triangles around career path, uh, cooperation with other departments, confidence, um, in emerging challenges and also fairness to employees. So overall, really great scores. On the, the far right-hand side is a, um, a frequency distribution. So you can see how many people voted or ranked at one, two, three, four, five. So it's helpful as we, and this again is just a really high level snapshot, but we're able to deep dive into departments to see, you know, did, did three people, um, vote one and 87 vote five? And there's nobody in the middle? Like, are there three people just having a bad day? Or is it pretty consistently ranked down five, four, three, two, one? So we, we're able to look a bit deeper to see, uh, where we can focus. Finally, kind of our next steps with this. So if, if we just took the survey and then put it on a shelf and didn't look at it again, I guarantee you our engagement, uh, participation rate would go down next year, right? So the whole point of measuring is to create action plans, to make change. And this happens really at every level of the organization. So we've spent some time analyzing the results. Directors are going through the state of the team presentation with their staff to update and then create action plans with the staff. What can we all do? What do we care about? First of all, like what, what, what are these numbers telling us? The survey is just a tool. The survey is not the end goal. The end goal is having a great place to work. So what can we learn from the survey and change in order to improve that? So we have action plans for staff, for directors, and then we'll continue to kind of check back in, review, and then survey next July. So it's an ongoing, continuous improvement process. That's it. Any questions? Anything I missed, Matt, that you want to make sure that council knows?
No, there, there, this is a software-driven, Gallup is the oldest, biggest, um, you know, survey, uh, company in, in the country that, that it does employees engagement, whatnot. So that's why we picked them. Uh, we, every year when we choose to ante up again, we get a specialist from, from Gallup that worked with us and helps, you know, slice and dice all this. And so we have some nice educational, um, sessions with them to make sure that we're not missing anything in the data. And, and they kind of present it to us and we can ask questions. So it, it's a deep dive, but it's, you know, it's the most important thing I think I can do here for you. As a city manager is to make sure that, uh, your employees are well taken care of and they know that we're here for them. So got to, got to ask, got to listen, got to fix.
Thank you.
Just positive comment. Your 87% engagement is phenomenal.
Yeah.
And we, we see what percentage of our city budget goes into human resource. Making sure that they're effective and they know what they're doing and they know what's expected and they're happy is just terrific investment. So kudos. It's great to see.
Just a follow-up on the, the survey line. Do you still plan on doing one for the businesses in town?
We just finished, we're in our third iteration with that. I don't think we, we just, Barb and I just, uh, sent that in on Thursday or Friday. We assume they'll send us back one more draft, but I, I can't imagine changing it much at this point. I just want to see it reformatted, uh, the recent iteration. Planning on getting that out in October, early November before the holidays hit. Uh, they all know that it's coming. I had Beth from the chamber look it over and give us some input as well. All the directors have, have had input to that. So yes. So that, that will be our third survey. Those are the three populations that I think you keep hearing me say, I feel like are my customers, uh, you know, my employees. Uh, I really want to listen to them and take care of them. Our residents, of course, and now our businesses. So then, and we'll have surveys. I know that when we started this three years ago, uh, and we had 84, uh, and I think we had 84% participation. And our Gallup, uh, representative said, uh, wow, that's so high. That's going to be hard to do again or be like that. We just don't see any city start with that. And so, uh, it's been rewarding to see that we kept that up the second year and then in the third year has kept it up even higher. So, um, it's, uh, I think we're sending some national benchmarks relative to the completion rate. Okay. Let me go ahead and keep going. I'm sorry. Did anybody have any more questions on that? And thank you, Emily. I'm sorry it's so late and I, and to you all. Probably not the best night to go into a lot of detail with you, but, um, I appreciate your interest. So let me quickly kind of go through things. We can talk about this in some one-on-ones or, or you can ask me questions afterwards. I did want you to know that following your last meeting, um, uh, which was on the ninth, uh, two days later was of course nine 11. And so we did have a nice ceremony out here. It was, we won't let that slip by. Again, it, it didn't slip by. We had all the police and fire there and some residents and staff, but, uh, we will, we will put out and make sure that you're more aware of that in a timely way and, uh, and continue to honor, um, those that, uh, you know, lost their lives and, uh, all those affected by that. Uh, moving, moving on, um, so, uh, I have met with Steve Therenger and Devore about your policies and priorities and this, and the city ops meetings. We also had a follow-up meeting, uh, that was last Thursday, then I saw him again Friday, and then we had another meeting again today. So things are moving forward. I'll be eager to kind of update you, uh, as we finalize that. On the op side, of course, we're not touching your policy priorities, but on the op side, we are moving some things in and out based on Steve's, uh, input on, does he think we'll get funded or not? You know, it's nice that he's a local and a friend and, and said, yeah, that's going to be a stretch, what, you know, anything, anything else I know. So, uh, anyway, so that went great. I did want to get back to you. I also, uh, as requested by you to, I have met with, uh, Chief Justin Greider, uh, Fire District Three, uh, to talk about the overdose, um, data. Um, that was one of many things we talked about, but we spent quite a bit of time on it. I hadn't heard back from him. He said, well, let me get back to the, to the office and start running that by Friday afternoon. I hadn't seen anything. So I emailed him and, and as I walked down, uh, tonight, I saw something in my inbox. I haven't really opened it, but he's, it's a work in progress. Also working with, of course, Chief Hill. Uh, we think we'll have a lot of information generally to share with you all. So it probably needs another discussion then, and then, um, uh, you know, inter-local or whatever you choose to do as a council. So, yep. Moving forward as fast as we can. I think I already mentioned that I met with Reagan as well. She has, uh, pulled together a long-range capital committee, as you can imagine. She's worried about modernizing her facilities and whatnot. She wanted to, me to invite you to, uh, their board meeting, this, uh, school board meeting on October 1st. It's at 5:30. And that they'll be discussing the, the recommendations of this long-range capital committee, um, and discussing it there. She kind of thinks that they'll be, um, bringing forth a draft proposal with the potential to bond, uh, for some capital projects that they're, you know, sort of in need of over there for some future school construction and modernizing there. So, she also left all of you a invitation to the school board fundraiser. It's called Hopes and Dreams. It's on October 26th, down at Guy Cole. This is from five to eight. It's kind of a dinner fundraising, uh, for the, uh, school district foundation. Yep. I think we mentioned, I, where, I think, uh, met with Wendy Barr, met with Colleen McLeir, et cetera. I could go into some of those things. Uh, I think I won't, but, uh, one thing I did want you to be aware of, uh, we are, uh, it, just starting our branding wear. This is the Squim apparel that we have. Uh, Heather is your connection with that. I think we'll be sending an email out to you so you can work with her if you want a shirt or a sweater or whatever, uh, you know, we've talked about that before. So, um, Heather, we, we do this for all of our staff so that they all look professional and as part of the team. And, uh, I think we have things for you, a voucher for you as well. Okay. Enough of that. Uh, other HR, um, input, uh, out of 38 applicants for the IT leadership position. I wasn't really, um, just couldn't find the right match. So we spent the last week reworking the job description. We're probably going to repost that soon. We just didn't have any folks that had the right, um, the right skillsets or certifications for a municipality. And as we're doing so well. And as we're doing so well with Fred and Matt, who are still here, nothing's been dropped. Matter of fact, a lot is being done. So since we don't have a burning platform, we thought let's go slow and get the right person. So just wanted to give you an update on that. You know, real kudos to those two who are doing a great job. In the legal department, they're down from, I can't remember how many total, but then they entered five and now they're down to their, their last two.
Down to three.
Okay, three finalists now. And then in Parks and Events, the EJ Specialist started today. Her name is Carrie and so you'll see her upstairs. I'm eager to introduce you to her really remarkable addition to the Parks and Events team there. So, and finally from HR, I was told to kind of tip you off that the non-uniform labor negotiations have started and so that's starting in the works, some data, some expectations, whatnot. But we'll probably have a closed session with you in October to get some direction from you once we know a little bit more about kind of where lines are drawn and what that looks like. Most of you are aware of some input from the Community and Economic Development Department. So they had a really busy week last week. You remember they had a public meeting at Guy Cole. They invited the planning commission. They separated all seven of them at different tables and this meeting was run by our CJ, vendor, they're our comp plan consultant, who was getting input for future land use designations. And we had about 60 to 70 residents there for that. That was a really great event. The very next day, they had the same comp plan vendor and Lindsay and her team were here in your chamber, working on a middle housing initiative and getting input from the community leaders and contractors and developers and whatnot on how to address that aspect of the housing inventory and to add that to the comp plan. And then on Friday, so two days after that, we had another meeting here by the department that met with, this is a quarterly meeting that you all are aware of, that we meet with our contractors and developers. And they, you know, we've gone, they're just going really well. Very little questions, lots of appreciation. We showed them our new Tyler software and how everything's going to be digitalized and they can do everything online and, and track where their plans are and pay for their fees. And it just was a great week for our Department of Community and Development, Economic Development. And I think that's about that from that department. Public Works wanted me to report to you that we finally did submit our request for the Opportunity Fund. The Opportunity Fund Board was meeting last week and so we got a call to submit our proposal. And so that, that got in, it was one of like 48. But anyway, it was a really nice job submitting, meeting all the requirements for, for that request. Megan was responsible for a lot of that work. Hannah's still behind me. So as I think I mentioned to you in previous reports, Hannah was busy a couple of weeks ago presenting to the RCO Board in Olympia regarding some park projects that we needed or we were seeking some funding for. And she got word back that she, she was approved for $500,000 for the ADA playground equipment at the Margaret Kerner Park. So yeah, it's, it's not done. I mean, and that's going to be a beautiful facility. There's really nothing like that in Squim or even the closest one is PA or Chima Com, I think. But it still needs some additional funding, which we're going to add in to our list to see if DeVore thought that would be a great ask for, from the legislature. So we're adding that to our list. There is a church, it's not, yeah, it's a partial one and kind of half done, but yes, you're right, there is a private one at a church. Thank you for that. I knew that. There's some nice pictures of that actually on social media. My wife texted that to me and said, nice job. And I said, I wish I could take credit for that. I know. Because it's getting a lot of kudos, a lot of all the residents are loving that one. And she thought it was something we did around here. Anyway, so that's that. I wanted to update you on the McCord property. A sign is being made. We'll be posting it shortly and hope to have a ribbon cutting. I've talked to all the legislatures about that. They'll plan to come up. Hopefully we'll have some representatives from the McCord family and of course, we'd like you there just to at least designate that spot for what it is and, and let the public know about that. So thank you to Hannah for that. Anyway, I think that's mostly, mostly the legal department continues, of course, the process of scanning and digitizing a lot of the old documents that we have around and whatnot. Oh, under the police department, did I miss police? Oh, yeah. So they did held, the police department, I'm sorry for this long, when police department held a successful VIPS annual barbecue, that's Volunteers in Police Service. We have, I believe, 50, how many of those do we have? Fourteen, fourteen VIPS. They, in the, in the last year, from June to June, 23 to 24, we had almost 1,400 hours of free volunteer work from our, from our VIPS, which is, you know, 67% of FTE. So free, free labor. They've been doing a lot of wonderful things for us. They, they, in that annual recognition event, they, there's different awards for different things. They have an award for the number of hours of service. And, and so I could read the names of those that receive certain awards for hours of service, but also for years of service. And there was three, three of ours had VIPS had reached the five-year mark and I could, I could share that too. But, you know, they've been here for a long time and really helping us out. So wanted to acknowledge that. Other than that, yeah, you've probably heard of the upcoming Public Safety Fair down at Guy Cole in October. And so Mike and PD is working with the Fire District on that one, a lot of work going into that one, working on some drone preparation and some guidelines and training and whatnot on that. And then Squim PD also hosted and co-instructed a biannual independent investigation team. This is in combination with the FBI, had over 50 attendance here from all over the greater Olympic, so he's, he's very busy and appreciate all that PD is doing. So thank you, Mike. And that's everything. Sorry for the-
Quick question.
Long night, yes.
Did you say when the ribbon cutting was?
No, no. But we will be identifying that soon. The signs being made and so just getting, get that back and then coordinate with the
One other comment. We, this council was contacted by a member of the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society when the park was procured. And I'd like to see if perhaps we could reach out to this individual or an other closer chapter of Gary Oak Society to have a member of them, one of their members in attendance also. That would-
Sure.
I think be really meaningful.
More the merrier. Yeah, absolutely. The back of the property is where that and the Gary Oaks are. And so of course we'll, you know, state statute, I mean, we'll preserve those and do nice things with that property. Yes, Vicki.
When you were speaking with Chief Grinder, did you talk about the tractor parade and the Fire Department supporting the safety?
I believe I did. So we, I had, I had my list of five and I think that was one of them and he had his list of four. So, but he and I are supposed to talk tomorrow, but I'll, I'll make sure that I, I haven't heard back from him, but there was, I think it was on the list. Yeah, it's been a week now.
Council reports.
This report is for Brandon. I'll speak quickly. On the 17th of September, I went to the Developmental Economic Land Use Meeting at the Guy Cole Center and I just walked around and it was so cool to see all of the citizens so engaged. I really think people like to be asked what they think about something and they were so serious about problem solving. I just think, I thought it was really cool. I didn't say anything. I didn't butt in or anything. And then on the 18th, we had a transit meeting and Rachel, it is true, we're going to do the fair free for one more year, correct? For 2025, the buses, except for the straight shot and the Hurricane Ridge will be fair free.
Correctamudo.
Okay, good. And on the 19th, I went to the Chamber of Commerce Business after hours and it was the Alpaca Ranch. This is not the Alpaca Rescue, but the Alpaca Ranch and it was, it was just really cool. They're, they're so cute. And the people that, the couple that lives, it's in the beautiful setting in Happy Valley. The couple that lives there are really excited about their alpacas in there for sale. Yes.
I have a question for you at this recent transit meeting or if it's, was there availability in discussion time for this item to come up or is it going to come up at the next one? Was the discussion about a placement of Narcan distribution box, was that had at this meeting or, or I'm trying to remember the timing?
It's already been decided. We're waiting on a letter. They have to, the heat, what's it called? Harm Reduction Center has to sign a letter saying that they think it needs to be at the PA Transit. And then I asked them, and it's on the agenda for in October, I asked them, should we do the same thing in Squim? But, because that's not our property, that's the transit committee's property. And if that doesn't happen, we can maybe put it someplace else. Like the bathrooms that are kind of in between Guy Cole Center and the pickleball court or you know what I mean? Something like that. We have plenty of places. It's like First Date Kit. It's better to have it and not need it-
Sure.
-than to not have it and all of a sudden need it for something.
But you're saying that the, this is, that that discussion is on the agenda for the next meeting with the Transit Board?
For the one for Squim.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool.
But they won't put it there unless they get a letter of commitment from the Harm Reduction Center saying that they, you know, they're the ones who refill it and that the Harm Reduction Center thinks that's where it needs to be.
Okay.
Otherwise we, but we don't, if we skip that site, then somebody else in the city can make the decision for Squim. It doesn't have to be at the Transit Center.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
It's just that it's close to City Hall and the, you know, Farmers Market and stuff like that. But we've got plenty of places.
Yeah, and maybe it would have been consistent since there's already one at the Port Angeles.
It's not there yet.
Not there yet, but intentions are to install.
Yes, but they have, it's a very different type of bus stop. It's, it's used a lot.
Fair. Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that it's, thank you for clarifying, Kathy, that it's going to be discussed at the next meeting. I look forward to hearing how that turns out. Thank you.
But if I don't hear back from the Harm Reduction Center, I will take it off the agenda until I hear back from them. But that doesn't mean that city, we can't just go forward with something. Thank you. Right, Rachel? Is that the way you remember it also?
Correctamudo.
Thank you.
Any other reports?
Yes. Sorry, I will try to speak quickly also. Okay, so Squim Arts Commission, lots of awesome stuff happening there. They just had their monthly meeting right before our work session and they, they have a workshop that's happening later this week about paper quilling. It was very, very popular and it filled up in three days. So they're having really great reception for their workshops. There's a big party happening here on First Friday, which is October 4th. Everybody come down. The To Move Art Exhibit will be open. The artists that submitted art will be here, a saxophone, there, literally it says a saxologist, saxologists, plural. So some saxologists from the Squim City Band will be here providing live music. The arts coordinator today during the meeting said she's going to prepare some themed snacks and refreshments. So it's going to be quite the delightful party. And there's so much going on that the Squim Arts Commission is just on fire right now. They are re, there's a kickoff for the open music jam that was prior, happening prior during First Friday, but because of Swisher Hall, they're now doing a kickoff to host those at Swisher Hall on Third Fridays. The first one's going to be October 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Everybody come on down, bring your mandolins, guitars, ukuleles and all sorts of, all things and voices, everything. Everybody that wants to make music is invited.
I have a quick, quick clarification.
Yes.
So that'll be at Swisher Hall or at the band show?
At Swisher Hall, which is behind the band show. Yes. So that's the new intention is to host an open music jam, not on First Friday here at Civic Center, but at Swisher Hall for the community. The holiday ornament kits are going to be, some kits are being created and then will be distributed to the teachers for the holiday tree. Save the date, Friday, October, or December 6th, excuse me, is the holiday tree lighting with mayor or whoever would like to give those comments and read the submissions from the fourth graders here at Civic Center from 5:00 to 7:00. And yeah, it's going to be delightful. All the schools are in, all the fourth graders in the Squim School District are being invited to participate. And that's different than the big one over, I just wanted to designate that this is the, that's the tree lighting here in Civic Center with ornaments created by the fourth graders. But the one over at Centennial Place, that's different. So there's two trees. We are so lucky in this city. Really briefly, the Parks, Arbor and Rec Board received some very passionate public input about the fireworks and its effect on wildlife in Kerry Blake. So they are considering that public input and we will hear from the Parks and Arbor Rec Board with how, with more on that maybe potentially, but they're just in consideration because there has been some very passionate public input on that topic through the PARB also. And then last thing, I promise this is the end. Thursday, I'm going to drive to Everett. It's the third session of the Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute and I can't wait to give you guys the Cliff Notes on Session Three. So I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you very much. Have a great, rest your night, everybody.
All right. Any other reports? Anything for open discussion?
Just real quickly, since nobody has applied for the student liaison position, I didn't think about how all of these leadership kids have so much on their plate already and this is the deadline for applying for the student liaison position. And it's homecoming week, so it's very busy. And so I was hoping that we could extend the deadline to maybe September 30? No, sorry, October 7th. And that can give them another week to fill out an application hopefully. And then we could have interviews, hopefully the week of the 7th and the 14th, and then bring back recommendations on October 28th. Is everybody okay with that? Molia, you have a question, comment? What do you think? What do you think a timeline?
What do we do in the case if nobody applies?
Then we will be very sad.
Our policy says we can have up to two youth liaisons, so it's okay for us to have one. I think that October 7th could be a good deadline. It's just that there's like, the main advertisement, I think that we're all thinking of is like flyers up in the different buildings, which has not gotten done because A, there's a lot of like decoration up for homecomings, so if it got put up, it would have been taken down. And B, our advisor just hasn't printed them. So.
When does stuff get taken down after homecoming?
This Friday. So if we put it up on Monday, that would give people a week to apply?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that could be a good deadline. Does that need to have a motion or?
I think if we have general consensus, it should be okay. Okay, can I get thumbs up? That timeline sounds good? Okey dokey. Thank you, everybody. That's it for me.
And council, I'll just let you know, as I brought this up with Reagan, she said we're, we're struggling in a lot of positions like this. They've got slots for students. we're, we're struggling in a lot of positions like this. They've got slots for students on their school board, on other committees and whatnot, in and out of the school and around town. And she says, just really tough because they're so busy. So I, I said, what do, what do we need to do? And she says, don't worry, it's not you. It's just, it's just the situation. So.
I have one more question. Okay. In the, in the event that I can't make it to a meeting since it's only me and it's not Georgia, who should I email a report to? Because I did that last time. Georgia and I both weren't here, and I don't think anyone got it.
I would say definitely Heather, because if Heather gets it, somebody else will get it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay with you, Heather?
Works just fine.
Anything else? I do have one quick thing. As soon as I can find time to finish it, I do plan to bring forth a proposal to resurrect the People's Project under a new light to kind of tie in with the neighborhood groups that hopefully can be resurrected. So Sue's not here for the bad news of potentially changing the budget, although my, maybe to spare her, maybe might dip into rainy day funds for this project, just depending on how things work. But as soon as I can finish the proposal, I'll get it sent out to everybody. So.
Could I have some clarification of what, what does that mean, neighborhood groups?
So in the before COVID times, there was-
Before the dark times.
Yeah. There was, I think it was six or seven specific groups, neighborhood groups within the city. Like you see those boards that are strategically placed, that just were meant to have, yeah. Kind of think of what the, the goal was, because it was very short-lived because COVID kind of killed everything. You know, more of a community feel for specific areas of the city. You know, they could have their own board with different community events and fires and things like that. So the goal, I think, like to re-resurrect that idea. And I think to move the People's Project, hopefully, maybe to utilize funding for those neighborhoods, where maybe those neighborhood groups could apply for city funding for maybe smaller projects within these neighborhoods that generally wouldn't get funding for such things.
Do you remember how long the program was before COVID killed it?
I think it first came along when I first got on Council. So it couldn't have been more than three or four years it was going. So it wasn't, it wasn't very long before it wasn't able to keep going because of staffing and COVID and all that stuff. So. But it's still out there. And like I said, as soon as I, I think I got the, the email, I'll just send it to everybody. So at least gets a gist of what the program was. So. But just some ideas. Like I said, as soon as I get around to finishing, and I'll get it sent out for everybody. If nothing else, anybody interested for the next planning meeting on October eighth at two?
I may be able to do it. I can't commit tonight, but I, I would like to. So.
Okay.
You two will always do it.
All right. Dan, if he is able to make it, that's volunteered. All right. Next regular council meeting will be Monday, October fourteenth at six PM.
I motion to adjourn.
Everyone have a good night.